You just tell me when you're ready.
What?
Okay. All right, if we get the audience to calm down, we get the meeting started, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
That's okay. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 9, 2016. To order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll just point out that Charlene is an assistant town administrator, is not with us this evening. She's having some scheduled surgery tomorrow, so we gave her the evening off. We wish her well and hope she gets well soon, so we'll keep you posted as we know. Weekly briefing. Anybody for weekly briefing? Other comments and announcements? I would just like to thank everybody involved with town meeting last week. I think it went very smoothly. I think everyone involved in making all the preparations for town meeting did a wonderful job. You know, things went very smoothly to get done in one and a half nights, so I think when you have $4 million in free cash, it's a lot easier. As we all know, we didn't have to struggle over to buy a tire for a truck. We just bought the truck, you know, so. Lincoln's smiling back there, so he must agree with that one, so anyhow. And we will be later on going through the ballot questions, just to make sure, because election is a week from Tuesday, and we'll be reviewing those just from the standpoint of an informational purpose later in the agenda. So with that, Janelle, would you, on the consent agenda, would like to take A1 by itself first and then do the rest?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve minutes from April 11, 2016, regular session.
Okay. Moved in second to approve the minutes of April 11, 2016, regular session discussion. We'll note that Linda was not present at that meeting, right? So she's going to exclude herself in the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's a vote. Thank you.
Abstention.
All right. Janelle?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept and approve the minutes from May 2, 2016, pre-town meeting. Accept the resignations of Paul Tebow and Rosemary Tebow from the Treasure Chest Committee. Approve the recommendation of the Board's Interview Nominations Subcommittee to appoint Sheila Eldridge as a full-time member of the Treasure Chest for a one-year term. Approve the recommendation of the Board's Interview Nominations Subcommittee to appoint Karen Larson to the Sacquetucket Development Committee for a one-year term. Approve mooring regulations changes per the request of the harbor master. Approve application for a road race for 2016 Bike MS Cape Cod Gateway, Getaway.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second to approve consent agenda items A2, B, C, D, E, and F. Discussion. Hearing them, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's a vote. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a public hearing application for a seasonal general on-premises alcohol beverage license for Go Industries, Inc., Doing Businesses, Perks in Harwich Port. Janelle, do you have the notice of the public hearing?
Yes, I do. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Harwich, Board of Selectmen, Application for Liquor License. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended. That application has been made to this board for a seasonal general on-premise all-alcoholic beverages license for Go Industries, Inc., DBA Perks, Taylor Powell, Manager, on the following described premises located at 545 Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass., 02646. Cafe located on the first floor, rear of building with three entrances, two on the north side, one on the south side. Patio area with exterior seating and porch area with exterior seating. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing upon the application on Monday, May 9, 2016, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Dawn B Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, at which time all interested parties will be heard.
Okay, so we'll call the public hearing to order. Chris, can you tell us where all the butters notified? Just want to make sure.
It was my understanding that we were going to get the green cards tonight, Mr. Chair.
Appigan here, yep. These are the green cards that butters have been notified.
I know it's been reviewed and approved by the various departments, and we're just waiting for the green cards to come in, so.
So the applicants want to tell us what their business plan is? We always like to hear this, so come on up to the mic if you would. Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. How's everybody doing tonight? Good?
You might tilt that mic up just a little bit so the folks at home can hear you.
Sorry, I just rushed to get here, so I'm a little out of breath. My name's Taylor Powell, I'm the manager on record for the current liquor license with the state of Massachusetts and also Perks. So I want to thank all of you for your time and the people of Harwich for your time and consideration for this license. And I want to give you a short explanation on why Perks is requesting an upgrade to our current liquor license. We're a seasonal business. We're open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. However, we lose money the whole month of June because we don't have the business until school's out and people start vacationing. We actually have a seven-week season, so it's not rational to operate a business and only have seven weeks of profit. So we need to do everything possible to generate revenue, as we do not have 365 days a year to count on. Owning and operating a restaurant is one of the hardest businesses to run. My career has revolved around Perks. I manage different restaurants in the winter and the fall and the spring. I've chosen this career path to learn from these restaurant groups and apply my knowledge and experience to make Perks better for our customers and this town of Harwich. I'm very proud that Perks has the highest Yelp rating out of all the restaurants in downtown Harwich Port. If you don't know what Yelp is, Yelp is the number-one business and restaurant review site on the Internet. So no matter which restaurant I manage or run or who I talk to in the restaurant world, food is almost a courtesy and the money and the margins are in alcohol sales. Our customer requests and our drive to stay in business is why we need to upgrade this license today. We've held a liquor license for four years now without any infractions or problems whatsoever. We've proven that we can hold a liquor license and that we can serve and monitor alcohol sales within the laws. Please allow us to open, operate our business under this new license, as you've allowed other businesses to do the same. Please do not forbid us to generate this revenue if we're within the laws to do so. Please vote in favor of this new license for Perks. Thank you very much.
Okay, while you're up there, do you have any changes to any of the layout of the building or anything to do in the building that we need to know about? Any of the seating outside, et cetera? All stays the same as it has been?
No, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, again, I ran here and I rushed and the flight was delayed and...
Okay, I'll take questions from the board, then we'll open up to the general public.
Sure.
Could you please, for the listening audience, explain what change you're wanting for your license? From what license to what license?
We currently have a beer and wine license. We've had that for four years now. So we want to upgrade our license to all seasonal, of course, same seasonal, but all alcohol. So we get requests for an Irish coffee, for example. Our guests have spoken, and I'm here listening to them, and of course, trying to drive revenue and stay in business. I mean, you guys see a lot of businesses come and go in town. We want to be here to stay. I mean, I want to be here next summer and season's out. To have a business for seven weeks is just, it doesn't make sense. I would stay open all year long if I could, but we'd lose a lot of money in June, and it's really July 4th to the last day, last week of August. That's our season.
Other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience want to make comment or have any questions? No one? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I want to entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the application for a seasonal general on-premise all-alcoholic beverage license for Go Industries, Inc., DBA Perks in Harwich Port.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the application for a seasonal general on-premises all-alcohol beverage license for Go Industries, Inc., Doing Businesses, Perks in Harwich Port. Discussion. Hearing them, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's a vote. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next, under public hearings and presentations is the ballot question review. We had set the ballot, which by the way is part of the election, a week from Tuesday, which should be the 17th. I just want to make sure we put it out there to people, it's only informational at this point in time. But the first question, "Shall the town of Harwich be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued to fund the reconstruction of Sacquetucket Municipal Marina docks, piles, and services, to include a handicapped accessible ramp system that brings the marina in compliance with the American with Disability Act and dredging approximately 12,500 cubic yards of material to bring the marina with permanent, within permanent depth?" And the answers are yes or no. This was an article at town meeting. Voted, I believe unanimously, to endorse this or take it, approve it at town meeting as an article and take it to the ballot question. The harbor master isn't very good at explaining the safety and serviceability issues, if you will, at the marina. Hasn't very good at explaining that we'll have additional dock space and things will be reconfigured. And I think the committee has done, the Waterways Committee has done a good job, and the Sacquetucket Harbor Committee has done a good job in explaining to this board and others that a large portion, a significant majority of the money that will be required to service the debt, if you will, will come from fees generated from that marina, if you will, so. And we also have a $1 million state grant to support this, so a $7 million construction cost estimate with $1 million coming from the state. The town then would be responsible, taxpayers are responsible then for $6 million, okay? And there is an explanation here which people should read. I think it's a great explanation. Chris, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add or anybody else on the board wants to add on this. Angelo?
I just wanted to add something, Peter. You said the town is responsible for the $6 million. That's true, because we legally have to have the town's backing, but in terms of the cash moving around, Waterways intends to pay 75% of that whole amount, and we also have a million dollars coming out. And unfortunately, the ballot question explanation which we have in front of us isn't on the ballot, I don't believe, can't be, so if you don't fully understand it, please read this paragraph.
Take this time to read it, get educated, yep.
It was also in the warrant.
I do think, Mr. Chairman, just to point out, I know a question came up at town meeting about how this was going to be kind of funded. It is a general obligation bond. If we were to fund it 100% from fees, then it would actually be a revenue bond, it would be treated very differently. So it is being done as a general obligation bond with the primary repayment to come from the harbor fees. And we can do that, or the board's already voted that, to have those harbor fees be dedicated for the repayment schedule. And with the $7 million, when you take out the $1 million from the Seaport grant, and then you have about 75%, you're talking about about a million to a million and a half as the obligation of the taxpayer over that 20-year cycle. So I do think that, I think we've been very, very creative. I just want to appreciate all the efforts of John Rendon to go out and get the grant, number one. I know that was one of the things that we had talked about. And then, secondly, working with the committee to make sure that we have that funding mechanism that minimizes the impact onto the taxpayer.
Okay, John, do you have anything you want to add to it? Okay.
I think that's covered. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to do this again next week, by the way, because I just want to keep putting it in front of people, keep them reminded, because otherwise, there's no way for them to know, you know? So we'll put this on the agenda again for next week. Okay, anything else on question one? Ballot question two, "Shall the town of Harwich be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued to fund the road maintenance program as requested in the capital plan for fiscal year 17?" I think that's pretty straightforward. The dollar number at town meeting was, Chris, refresh your memory.
Yeah, it's actually, under the plan, we have an ongoing plan that we estimate about $1.4 million per year that we put towards maintaining the roads. That number will allow us to maintain the roads. What the town has historically done is the town has, it receives, like every other town, Chapter 90 money, which is basically gas tax money that is sent back to cities and towns. We get about $700,000 from that resource. Last year, we got close to a million dollars. We get a much larger amount. But what this does is this is going to have a supplemental, so this would be supplement that by 700,000. So the 700,000 from Chapter 90 plus the 700,000 from this puts us in that $1.4 million range. You know, I have to say, just driving around town, just looking at our roads comparison to other roads as I come to and from work, you know, I'm amazed that it's a hard job to keep the roads up. And I think Link Hooper and the DPW folks do an outstanding job of being on that and having the roads be passable without large potholes in different areas. So I think this is something that is part of our ongoing maintenance plan, and it would be a dead exclusion, so we would finance that over a five-year period of time. And by doing this each year, we have some fall off and then some come on. So the idea is to have this be a rotating process, so we minimize the impact on the taxpayer as well.
Yeah, I've heard many people comment, gee, I'm glad our roads aren't the same as Chatham's roads and things like that. I mean, there are, people do notice from town to town in comparison how well we maintain our roads. Thank you, Lincoln. Appreciate that. Would you like to comment on this one? Lincoln?
I would. The thanks needs to go to a lot of people. This board, the finance committee, capital outlay committee, supportive administrators, and most, the citizens of Harwich, that vote for this funding.
Yep. There's no doubt the taxpayers pay for it, and they see your efforts and they appreciate you, and I mean collectively, your efforts to maintain the roads, and they see you're very visibly out there getting it done. And so hopefully, they'll continue to support this, the needs to be done.
And one more person. I think Chris Nickerson's done a wonderful job. He is the man that's been in charge of the roads, and he does a very good job at keeping our, one of our most important infrastructures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on question two? Question three, sponsored by this board, is a non-binding advisory ballot question regarding the Harwich Middle School. It reads, "The Board of Selectmen is evaluating options for the reuse or sale of the Harwich Middle School Building, which currently costs the town under $25,000 annually for maintenance, and is seeking voter input on four options, any of which require future action at town meeting." So when you vote for any one of these, it doesn't mean it's going to be that way, as other things that have to happen for that option to be fulfilled, if you will. Please vote for only one option. And again, people will need to take the time, and I'll just throw the options out here. Do you favor the retention of the Harwich Middle School Building, changing the use to a mixed municipal private use, such as a relocated town hall and private organization, leased area for community activities, which has an estimated cost of $11,476,000 for a full upgrade of the available 79,700 square feet of space and an estimated annual operation and maintenance cost of $250,000? No additional town employees are included in these cost estimates, and this option includes the sale of the existing town hall. The second one, second option, is do you favor demolition of the Harwich Middle School Building and retention of the land for a future general municipal use, which has the current estimated cost of the town of $800,000 for demolition and site restoration? Number three, do you favor the sale of the Harwich Middle School Building and land for affordable or senior housing purposes to an outside developer, for which the town previously received an offer for $672,000, with real estate taxes estimated at $20,000 to $30,000 per year? And four, do you favor the retention of the Harwich Middle School Building to be leased or sold, as is, to the purpose of a self-sustaining private organization, cultural and/or community center, or educational use? The purpose of these four is to get a sense, give this board a sense as to what people are thinking, those that eventually would have to pay for this, how they would like to see this facility used or disposition. And there is nothing binding here, as it says in the article. We're just trying to get a sense of it. So maybe, when we go through all this, we can sort four down to two, or four down to one, or four down to four, whatever it is, we'll see how it all works out. But, you know, I know that the team put a lot of time into sorting through the options and whatnot, so we'll see. It's very important that people take the time to understand these and make their own judgment as to how they would like to see us move forward. Again, it's non-binding, so you're not voting, you know, 11-plus million dollars at this point in time if you wanted to take option one and likewise, with the others. It's not a money question, it's a sense of direction question, if you will. So we appreciate everybody taking the time to go through these and make their own decisions. Janelle?
Couple of questions, Peter.
Yep.
So I know that we budget $125,000 annually to maintain and pay for utilities and such at the building, but in actuality, have we spent that money?
We have, we have not spent the total amount, but I want to be careful how I answer this, because some of that is the hot water system malfunctioned, so we shut it off because there's no one in the building. So, you know, the best way I characterize it is, it's called minimally maintained, and what that means is we're making sure that there's no, you know, water damage or things of that nature. But I think it is a fairly modest number, and to use that, heat that at a basis of, you know, 65 or 70 degrees versus what I think we're heating at like 55 now, it's going to have a fairly significant difference. But to answer to your question, we do have money left over, but in part, that's why, because we have been kind of scaling back on the operation.
Okay. And then my other question is, it's kind of more of an observation, actually. The rec department has been utilizing the gymnasium much more since these questions were written. In fact, this summer, they're even going to be having a grade seven through 10 summer day camp option, Monday through Friday over there, from 9:00 to 4:00 PM, utilizing the gym. And I don't think it's 100% clear to townspeople in these four questions, the way they're written, how the rec department's use of the building fits in. And I wonder, I mean, I know the ballot's been printed and everything, but is there something that we can do that allows people to understand that, you know, the rec department is currently using it? And also, I did bring this up a few times before, but for instance, question four, the private citizen who came forward and even proposed a cultural center had no objection to allowing the rec department to continue to use the building, and also other town entities such as maybe Harwich Junior Theater or Cape Cod Theater Company and Town Band and whatnot. And I just don't know, I want, I want to make sure that voters understand, you know, how we're using it already and that it doesn't quite fit into these four questions.
Well, at the time that we put the ballot together, this is what we decided to put on the ballot. If other, if other activities are happening as a fallout from this and as we explore what to do going forward, those things would obviously be discussed and included in the discussions, but at this point in time, the ballot is locked, and you've got to choose between one, you know, one of four. It's your only option. You can't put other, or you can't write in what you'd like to say, you know? So if someone said they voted for number four, and as part of those discussions, we had discussions and said, oh, by the way, can the town band use this or that, then that would be a discussion at that point in time. It's not meant to be a binding question, just give us some sense of direction. Linda?
And I think that if that is what the direction that the town wants us to go in, I think you write all that into the RFP.
I just don't want it to get confused with the number one, which is 11 and 1/2 million dollars to renovate it, you know?
Well, no matter which way you go with it, the numbers are not going to be exactly what's here. I mean, if someone, you know, someone says they want to do a self-sustaining private cultural center, but if the town wanted to still use some of the facilities, I would assume the town's going to pay some of it, as opposed to this cultural center assuming all the costs. So that's going to be a variance to it. You know, just have to get fleshed out. I think the biggest thing is, you know, I'm making this up, if everybody in town says we want to knock it down, then guess what? It's pretty clear what you do, you know? But I think it's going to be well spread out. Let's put it that way. Be my guess.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
As long as you come to the mic, ma'am, and identify yourself.
My name is Carol Novak, and I'm a resident at 30 Harbor Road. Is there anywhere on the ballot that gives the age of the building? How old it is? And so to better help people understand if it's wise to tear, if the building's 10 years old, is it wise to tear down a 10-year-old building?
Part of the building goes back, if I recall right, to sometime in 1940s. That's the front part, the old original, it was a high school way back when. And the rest of the facility, which was added on about 1988, '89, and renovated at the tune of about $13 million, if I remember the number right back then, that's what it is. But of course, this became available to us when Monta Moi Regional School System was formed, and we didn't need two middle schools, quite frankly.
Right. I understand. Thank you.
Not to nitpick, Peter, but I think it was somewhere in the 90s that the renovation was done. It wasn't in the 80s.
I moved here in '89, and my kids were jammed into elementary school while it was being built, so.
I thought it was early 90s as well. Either way, there's a lot...
It might have opened in 1990, I don't know, whatever, but...
And there is a lot of information online about the middle school. This has been talked about with two different repurpose committees for a couple of years now, so there is a detailed report. You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else on this one? And we'll do this again next week, just to put it in, you know, when people watch Channel 18, you just put it in front of them. So, okay, we'll move on then to, there's no old business, new business. A is recommendation of the harbor master regarding a special-purpose mooring for the Stone Horse Yacht Club. John Rendon, harbor master. Now we know you want to speak. Oh, you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. John Rendon, harbor master. I put in front of you a request to add an additional special-purpose mooring for the Stone Horse Yacht Club. In accordance with Harbor Management Plan, it requires the Board of Selectmen approval. This is a mooring that, according to Mr. Jeff Morgan, who I think is the Commodore, or he's in the management of the yacht club, they've been using this mooring out in Nantucket Sound, just southwest of the entrance to Sacquetucket Channel, for, he said, somewhere 50 years or so. That could be. When I got here, and I've been here three full summers, and when I got here, I noticed this mooring that was out there, and I started asking some questions. And anyways, it's not properly, it's not permanent at all from within the town. And I had some concerns from a safety perspective, because this mooring is only utilized when they're out doing their sailing regattis. And they use it for their race boat to tie off to and monitor the race and safety of the kids that are sailing. But when they're done, the mooring just sits there, and it's a big, hard, plastic mooring that, very difficult to see when there's not a boat on it during the day and certainly at night. So I recognize the need for it, and I support the request. However, it needs to be permitted, and so I think a special use permit is appropriate, or special purpose permit is appropriate, because it is for boating education. And I'm requiring some changes to the mooring itself. Going to a larger foam mooring with a radar reflector on there, so a radar can pick it up at night, and an orange flag that flies during the day, so it's very obvious when there's not a boat on it. So the yacht club's been very supportive, they're in agreement. We've done a design, working with Dan from Harwich Boatyard, who sets their mooring every, every summer. So we're all in agreement, and we just need your approval of that. It would be an additional special-purpose mooring. They currently have three in the inner harbor, three in the outer harbor, so this would be an additional one.
Questions from the board? Have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the harbor matter, harbor master regarding a special mooring for the Stone Horse Yacht Club.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the request by the harbor master for a special-purpose mooring for the Stone Horse Yacht Club. Discussion. Hearing them, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Do you have a mooring?
Thank you.
Item B, recommendation of harbor master regarding the designation of commercial fishing vessel moorings. You're up again.
Okay, so this is, this is a request to have a certain number of moorings in the inner harbor, Whichmer Inner Harbor and Whichmer Outer Harbor, that are designated as commercial fishing vessel moorings. We currently don't have any. They compete along with all the other rec boaters on the same waitlist. And so there is no preference currently to the commercial fleet when it comes to moorings. There are slips. We have certain slips that are designated as commercial fishing... There are slips. We have certain slips that are designated as commercial fishing, uh, vessel moorings that are filled. And when they're vacated, they're filled from a waitlist of commercial fishing vessels. We have several moorings. We just spoke of one category, so special purpose mooring. We also have working moorings that are specific to a certain group. That would be the yacht clubs and that would be the marinas to help them run their business. I think it makes a lot of sense and there are neighboring towns that do the same thing of having a select few that, um, are designated for our commercial fleet. Um, as I say in the memo here, you know, we've, we've made some major investments to support our commercial fleet with infrastructure and, um, over time, the people, the commercial guys who give up their moorings are currently going to recreational and, and before you know it, there's not gonna be any, um, moorings that are currently filled by our, by our commercial fleet. And so I think it's important we preserve that. I, I think, um, I'm, I'm putting some conditions. Um, if you would like for me to go through them, I can.
Keep going.
Okay. There's some conditions that, that apply to, uh, the moorings that I'm recommending. And, um, the six that I've identified are currently occupied by commercial fishing vessels, uh, commercial fishermen. Two in the outer, or two in the inner and four in the outer harbor. So those six have been, have waited on the appropriate waitlist and so whenever they decide, um, to stop fishing and they give up their mooring, I'm suggesting that then go to a commercial fisherman. If they say, I'm done commercial fishing, but I want to maintain my mooring and use it recreationally, they can. They're gonna be grandfathered from these conditions that I'm given because they waited for that on the appropriate waitlist. Moving forward though, when somebody accepts a commercial fishing vessel mooring, when one of these six are, are, are let up and we go to the waitlist, we go to the first person on the waitlist that has identified themselves as a commercial fisherman. And we, we assign that specific mooring to that person. In order to, uh, be designated as a commercial fishing vessel, they have to have a permit. They have to have a, 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 a commercial fishing permit, either issued by the state or, or by the federal government. And they have to purchase an E permit. Our E offloading permit is a permit, is it a, it's a commercial fishing vessel offloading permit for those people who are either operating from a, a mooring or operating from, um, a private slip. They could be tied up at Allen Harbor Marine and still want to commercial fish and they can use our offloading areas if they have that E permit. So it's, you know, they have to show that they're, um, actively commercial fishing. They, the, the rules apply as far as, uh, operating at least six months during the calendar year and actively commercial fishing for six months. That's the requirement of an E permit and that would apply. So, and then if, if they decide to stop fishing, they can't keep that mooring. They have, that mooring will be revoked if they don't renew their E permit or they lose their commercial permit or they just decide I'm done fishing. That permit then goes to the waitlist and it goes to the next person who is commercially fishing.
So John, just to be clear, right now you have six commercial
Yes.
fishing moorings, basically. What you said previously, when those individuals or corporations, whatever, decide they're gonna stop fishing, they can keep those six as recreational.
The ones that currently hold those, right.
There are no new commercial moorings that you're establishing here.
Correct.
If someone is on the waitlist today and identifies themselves as commercial versus, you know, recreational, unless there's a commercial mooring that comes available, they come to the top of the list and there's a recreational mooring available. They take that and their commercial fishing off of that mooring, right?
Yes.
Does that then become a commercial fishing?
No, it doesn't.
It does not.
It does not. So if they're on the waitlist and their number comes up and we, we're gonna have that, we have a commercial fisherman, I think, is, uh, two on the list. So he'll probably get a recreational mooring offer before a commercial. He can accept that. But that doesn't become a commercial mooring. He gives it up, it goes to the waitlist and the next person on the waitlist, whether it's recreational or commercial, will be assigned.
And loses, if he takes that as a recreational or takes the recreational mooring, he then loses his opportunity to get one of these six commercial ones.
That's right.
If he ever given up.
That's right. He's, he's now off the waitlist. He's got a mooring. If he wants to get back on the waitlist after he gives up the recreational mooring, he can, but.
So, so it's conceivable, maybe it's very likely that none of these six are coming up for a long time.
That's right.
Okay.
Could be.
Just trying to.
Exactly. Okay. So I, I just, I just think it's important we try to preserve the presence of our commercial fleet.
I understand. Another question?
I was just a little confused at the beginning of what you were saying. The six that are going to be grandfathered right now.
Right.
If they, let's say, one of them decides he's no longer going to be a commercial fisherman.
Yeah.
He can stay on the mooring he's out, on right now or he's going to be bumped?
No, he can.
He can. So conceivably, the six people
Forever.
could be forever and we don't actually have.
Well, forever's a long time. What we see in, and the reason this is brought up is we've had several commercial fishermen over the years, even in the short time I've been here over, um, that give up their moorings because they're done fishing. I mean, the reason they're on the mooring is because they're fishing, they're making a, a, a living and then they decide to go a different direction. They give up their mooring and then it goes to a recreational boater. And so the, you know, the availability just, just is reduced for the commercial fleet.
And I had one more question when I was reading through this. Um, so because they're commercial fishermen. Um, and I, I don't pretend to understand the entire industry, but business-wise, you can sell a business. So if somebody were to sell their boat and they're, maybe they have a business, um, would the new owner automatically get the mooring?
No, they're not transferable at all. And it's clearly stated in our harbor management plan that they're not.
Okay, right.
Mike?
John, is six enough commercial moorings for the town of Howard?
Yes, sir. I think so. I mean, I'd like to start there and see how we're doing. If you look at the waitlists, um, there's not a huge number on, on the waitlist and we vetted this through the commercial fleet. Tom Luce is one who has really kind of been pushing this and, and as we discussed this, he agreed and, and I think they agree that that's a good number to start with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further questions from the board? Someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the harbor masters for the designation of commercial fishing vessel moorings.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to approve the request by the harbor master for the designation of commercial fishing vessel moorings. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Allison Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Oze, to vote. Thank you. John, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for you doing?
I have one more.
Get them all done at one time.
All right. New business C, contract between the town and Department of Fish and Game for reconstruction of bulkhead and concrete seawall stone reconstruction at Allen Harbor Public Access Facility. Discussion and possible vote?
So this is just a continuation of the public access grant that we've been working with for the last year and a half, I guess. Started with the bulkhead, um, that we replaced. We entered into an agreement with the state, um, for a public access facility and then they would pay us, or they would, uh, issue us a grant paying sixty-two percent of the total project cost and the town is responsible for thirty-eight percent of it. And so this is the last part of that project. We've replaced the bulkhead. We've installed a revetment wall on the south end of the, uh, parking lot. Um, we've, um, and now this is gonna be the regrading and repaving of, uh, of the parking lot. We've replaced the restroom, but that restroom was on us, on the town, um, not part of the grant. So this fifty-five thousand that is, is just, um, funds that are going to the state's share of sixty-two percent. And, and there'll be more money coming. So right now, if you look at the totals, um, uh, after we accept the fifty-five thousand, they'll still, they still owe us around seventy-four thousand. And so, um, Doug Cameron from Fish and Boating, um, been very good, but he's gotta fight for that money every year. And so it comes in, you know, in portions.
So John, you give us the status of the project, you know, the boating season's coming up. What, what are people gonna expect to see down there?
Yeah, we're gonna, you know, if you've driven by Allen Harbor, you see that it's all torn up and it's being, um, regraded right now. Uh, it's a two-week project. Um, I expect that they'll be close to, I'm sorry, a three-week project. Um, they'll be finishing up next week. Um, our target was before Memorial Day and I think we'll, we'll be there. And when the parking lot is done, um, that, that facility is totally redone. You know, new docks, new bulkhead, new revetment wall, new parking lot, new restroom. So, and it will be a public access facility. And how does that impact us? You know, currently, um, in order to use the ramp and park at Allen Harbor, you have to have a seasonal ramp pass issued by the harbor master department. There is no daily, uh, option. Now that it's a public access facility, we have to provide that option. So just like at Sacquet Tucket, somebody can go in and pay a ten-dollar ramp fee and use Allen Harbor. And so we're gonna be instituting kind of an honor system. We'll have a box there with envelopes and they'll come in and they'll rip the perforated edge on that envelope, put it on their windshield and put ten dollars in and we'll check it, you know, throughout the day. So, but that will have, we have to have that option now that it's a public access facility.
Okay. Chris?
Do you think, uh, Ms. Chairman, this is actually kind of an interesting project because one of the things, uh, obviously the proximity to the, to the water made a little bit of a challenge. So they're using a porous, uh, blacktop. So there won't be catch basins. Uh, actually the blacktop will just absorb the water and it will work its way through. So it, it, it was, had to be done a little bit differently because of that element of it to, to do the porous, uh, blacktop. A little bit of an interesting project. I've seen that in a couple of places, uh, and it looks, it looks nice. People won't aesthetically realize the difference.
They do now. You just told them.
I think it comes with some challenges, just so you know, we gotta keep it clean and, you know, I know DPW, um, won't speak for Link here, but, um, you know, they, you can't salt it, you know, you, you, you have to have some care in, in maintaining that, that system in place so it doesn't get all clogged up. But, uh, I think it's the right thing to do. It's really the only option we have because of the high water table there, so.
So we have a sign that says, do not salt me or something, just so.
I don't know.
Salt chart doesn't run over there. Yeah, we'll figure that out. Okay, so before us tonight is the fifty-five thousand dollar, um, uh, grant. Contract, contract, I guess. So I didn't entertain a motion from someone on the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept and approve the contract between the town and the Department of Fish and Game for reconstruction of bulkhead and concrete seawall stone reconstruction at Allen Harbor Public Access Facility.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to approve the contract. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Allison Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Oze, vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, while John's still there, I just wanted to, um, we had a, a grant also at Whichmer Harbor and we needed to come up with some additional, uh, items to, to do. And I know that some work's been done on the shellfish lab and I don't know, John, can you kind of comment as to where we are with that?
Sure. Um, uh, DPW facilities are, um, making some much-needed repairs on the, on the shellfish lab. Um, they're gonna be putting a new floor in and we're gonna be replacing the roof. When we started that process, um, and they started looking under the existing floor, it was significant, um, uh, failure of, of some of the main structure underneath the floor. And so we've been required to drive some piles and put some support beams underneath the floor, which, um, that, that will be complete, complete by tomorrow. And then they'll come in, finish the, the new floor and then the contractor will come in and replace the roof. So, um, that's part of it. And then the other piece of that is, is, um, the new restroom. We're replacing the restroom over at Whichmer and that again is part of that, that grant. And then the other piece is we're putting a, a davit in, um, over there, uh, in the offloading area. The south side of that commercial fish pier, we're gonna have a nice davit for the commercial guys to be able to offload their catch there. So all those three things are part of this, um, grant.
So you could explain in layman's terms what a davit is, just so the folks in the audience.
It, it helps them offload their baskets of catch. It's a, it's a winch system that, you know, can very easily, uh, put it in the back of their trucks or, you know, offload it from their boats. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, under new business, item D, seasonal labor rate adjustment for DPW. Mr. Hoover?
Link Hoover, DPW director. I'm before you this evening requesting an adjustment in our seasonal labor rate. I look back in our records and the last time we adjusted our seasonal labor was two thousand and one, when we went from eight dollars an hour, um, to eleven dollars an hour. At that time, in two thousand and one, the minimum wage was six dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. The reason this is coming to a head now is we just advertised in the Cape Cod Times, we had one person apply that's only available for about half the season. I made some calls to, uh, some of my counterparts in some other neighboring towns. I put a small spreadsheet together and as you can see that we are significantly below market rate, uh, which became obvious, obvious with, uh, one person applying for a job at eleven dollars an hour. I had no idea what the minimum wage is, but for the uninitiated, there's ten dollars an hour in the state now. So that gap, uh, that margin no longer sustains the type of work we need. What we do with seasonal labor is a lot of what makes the aesthetics very pleasant in Howard. Mowing the sides of the roads, keeping, it, it's primarily mowing and weed whacking grass, keeping the cemeteries, the parks, the roads, everything looking pleasant. Um, we, we cannot handle the, the labor without seasonal assistance. It just is not possible. So I've requested a regrade from, I, I believe, a
Three to seven, I think.
Three to seven. To a, um, seven and that has a rate of three twenty-five at a step, uh, thirteen twenty-five at a step one to fifteen twenty-five at a step five. If the board approves that, I will be talking to the Cape Cod Times tomorrow to put an ad in for this weekend. Uh, we need labor like last week.
Mike, have these historically been college students?
They, they have been. The reason this hasn't been a, a problem for us for the last six, seven years, I look back, it's been a long time since we advertised, is we would get college students returning year after year. They liked the work environment and they could count on that and we could count on them. So it was a good relationship. Unfortunately, all of our college students have now graduated and didn't send any of their friends our way.
Sure. But ideally you'd start with, I'll just call it, you know, folks that are finishing up their freshman year or something and keep them for all four years. Cause there is some learning curve here. I mean, it, it sounds, sometimes it sounds kind of media, okay, they're cutting grass or whatever, but just to know how to get around, how to deal with the equipment, you know, that type of thing, I think is, um, I think you get more benefit out of it the more years they stay, I would think.
Like I said, we haven't advertised in five or six years, so we had returning students each year. They've now got real jobs. And, um, we didn't send any friends there our way, unfortunately.
Okay. Janelle, that was the question.
What's the minimum age to come work as a seasonal employee?
We require a driver's license at a minimum, so we have hired, say, seventeen-year-olds. A lot of the work would be working, uh, in, in the road layout, uh, along the shoulders. So we need to have people that are responsible and can take care and follow procedures. But, yeah, we, generally it's been filled by college students. We've advertised both at Monomoy, uh, and Cape Cod Tech, put flyers up, have zero response. So obviously the wage needs to be looked at. I mean, shame on me for not looking at it for fifteen years or better. But we've been set up until now.
Okay, may I request from, uh, DPW director, what would you like to do, folks? Any motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the seasonal labor rate adjustment for DPW.
Second.
That's from grade three to grade seven, right?
Yes.
Discussion? Lynda?
Uh, will, will this grading change cause any other problems in the, or any stress points in any of the other gradings?
This is actually a, a non-union, so there will be no union bargaining that would be necessary.
Understand that.
This actually, uh, I think goes to, I know in the water department, we had a similar circumstance where we advertised and we weren't getting people. And I, I think this is more in line with, it's more a reflection when the minimum wage went up, we're gonna have to adjust to keep that differential.
Are, but, uh, the question was more, there is this, uh, you know, seasonal hourly wage schedule. So my question was to that, that if putting the people that are at three up to seven, is that gonna put pressure on any of these other seasonal jobs? Or, you know, should we be looking at a, an overall wage and salary study?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Uh, the only area I could see that this would potentially come up is in the golf department. And so far I have not gotten any feedback from golf that they're having an issue filling it the same way that this is. But I wouldn't, I would anticipate that we may get other issues come up.
Further questions? Janelle?
Didn't we just, uh, raise the part-time? Didn't we just raise the part-time sticker salespeople just a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, we did, we did the sticker sales, we've done water, and now this is highway. The last real big one would be rec and, and golf. But I haven't got requests, so they apparently are able to fill with what they've had advertised.
Link?
Mr. Chairman, the wage schedule was looked at, don't quote me, probably four or five years ago. They looked at the whole, the whole wage schedule, non-union schedules in the town. They made a bunch of adjustments. At that time, I was asked if I had any problems. I said, "No, you can leave me where we are." So what they did is they moved, they kept us at the same grade and moved it up so the 11 was like at a step three or something. And I had no, I really had no issues, but it was looked at, Mr. Bull, probably three, four years ago.
Further questions? Again, the, the motion before you is to approve the request to move seasonal labor from grade three to grade seven. Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Allison Fairer say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? To vote, thank you. Good luck.
Anybody knows, anybody looking for a seasonal job, send them our way, please.
Well, you know, maybe the selectmen want to cut grass, I don't know. We'll see. It'd be a step up for us, you know.
That's more, that's more than we make.
Quite a step.
Quite a step.
Yeah, quite a step. We could do it seasonally. Imagine that. Wait a minute, let's rethink this. You got some applications? Bring them up.
Help to it.
We probably wouldn't qualify. Okay, next, purchases of Sutfin property. Chris, you want to walk us through this? We talked about this before town meeting last week, just to get a sense of it. I know Michael Locke is here.
Yes.
Conservation Trust, so just walk us through this, and Michael, you're welcome to come up and
Yes, two, two things, I think, Mr. Chairman. In, in terms of this, the town has been in the process of acquiring the Sutfin property. We had, I believe the town meeting was back in 2014, special town meeting, there was an appropriation made. The appropriation to acquire the property was for $293,000 with the idea that $220,000 would come from the Community Preservation Act, and that $73,000 would come from the Harwich Conservation Trust. So they, they did submit the money to the town. It was, I don't want to get too much into accounting, but I, I believe what transpired, it was put in the parking place, if you would, in the general fund for $73,000 when the gift was received. We anticipated that the closing would happen quickly. The closing was protracted, not so much by the town or HCT, but more by the, the Sutfins on the Sutfin side. So we've had a, a long period of time, and recently, very recently, when we went to actually get the check and, and prepare the check for the, the closing, we were anticipating doing the closing the same week as town meeting or slightly before. When we, when we did that, we realized that the money had been left in what's called the O1 or the general fund account, and it went past the fiscal year. And what that means is it should have been coded to a gift account, it was not. By being in the general fund, it got converted to free cash and, and the money went away in, in terms of being designated to free cash. So I, I called, I called Michael at HCT and said, you know, I know this is an important project. I explained to him what, what had transpired on, on the town's part, and he had offered to come up with $73,000 to be able to allow us to do the, the closing. So I, I think that we are still very much in that, in that mold of doing it. I think then that raises the second point, okay, they can't pay $73,000 twice for the same property, and with the money being converted into free cash, that I'd like to ask for the board this evening to, to make a commitment, certainly it can't commit what town meeting is going to do, but it can commit to putting on a article at either the Fall Special or the next May's Annual to reimburse HCT the $73,000 that was converted to free cash. So I, I believe that for, in good faith, for them to be able to move forward, issue the second check for $73,000, that it would be, I think, put them at ease and certainly make a, a commitment of the executive authority that the town is intending on reimbursing the $73,000 from the original. In terms of where did the $73,000 go, when it was converted to free cash, it now has been at town meeting, we did put it into the stabilization fund, so it is still in reserves, so it's not, it's not money that has already been spent for another purpose. We put it into reserves. So a little bit of unfortunate circumstance going over. I think really the, the time delay of doing the closing is more than anything what, what kind of drove this, and also having a changeover of accountants during this process was not, was not helpful either. But under, also, I did have a conversation with the town attorney, and under the gift statute for the money that was accepted, it was accepted for that specific purpose, so I believe that there is a, a legal necessity as well to commit to a reimbursement of money.
Michael, can we ask you, just on behalf of the Conservation Trust, just to confirm that you're in agreement with this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Town Administrator Michael Locke, Director of the Harwich Conservation Trust, thank you, Mr. Clark, for, for responding to this issue so quickly, especially in the run-up to town meeting, and thoroughly explaining it, and I, I do agree with Mr. Clark's explanation. It's just one of those items that happened during an accounting transition, as well as during a protracted closing timeframe. Harwich Conservation Trust Board of Trustees is supportive in good faith effort of supplying the town with a second $73,000 replacement fund to enable the town to close on the Sutfin project.
Okay, and assuming we approve this this evening, when do you think that closing would transpire?
I would suggest, in terms of contingent on your vote this evening, probably within a week.
All right. Questions on the board? And whenever a motion to offer?
One, one question, if, I understand what happened. If we put an article at town meeting and town meeting does not pass it, what then?
You know, I, I think that for town meeting, in my mind, this is very similar to on CPC when we say we have a commitment to fund the land bank debt, you know, borrowing, and that if, if the money's been allocated and is still available in, in reserves, you know, I think the most we can do is present a compelling case to town meeting. No one can guarantee what town meeting will or will not do at any given night.
What would be Plan B?
Um.
We should think about that.
I guess one option that we would have is that we, we could enter into a settlement discussion and then be compelled to put it on to our recap sheet as a final court judgment. I, I don't think that that would be something that I would
No, no.
do as Plan A, but certainly that would be Plan B to make sure that we fulfill a, a legal commitment that in my mind definitely exists.
And these funds are now parked in stabilization, so they're, I think what we'd put in the, the article would be, we'd pull them out of stabilization.
Right, right. I'm just asking the question, just to make sure we kind of think through, as I said, Plan B.
Right.
Should town meeting decide they don't want to agree to that? I find it hard that they wouldn't, but.
Town meeting did previously vote to acquire this property.
Sure did.
So we have some presence there, so.
So I think that they would, I think we'd have to make a good case for it, explain it.
Sure. Whenever a motion to offer?
I, I, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the findings on the purchase of the Sutfin property and the $73,000, and that the Board of Selectmen might commit to placing an article in the next available town meeting to reimburse Harwich Conservation Trust the $73,000.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to approve the request, and more, most importantly, to commit whenever the next town meeting is, special town meeting, whatever, that an article be included to recover these funds for the Harwich Conservation Trust in support of the Sutfin property land purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Allison Fairer say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any others vote? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You write the article, it'll be article number one.
Thank you very much.
We had to get through some of the stuff in the beginning, but it will be upfront, let's put it that way.
Glad to continue this strong public-private partnership, so thank you.
It's worked very well, and we, we certainly appreciate all the work, you know, you and your team do, and it is a partnership, there's no doubt about it, and it works well. So it's just one of these little things that took us a long time to get this done, as we all know.
Yes.
But we're almost there.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Chris?
I do have several items this evening, Mr. Chairman. The first one I have is I did enter into a VNA contract for $5,000 with the Board of Health for some services. Obviously, we do have a, a nurse that takes care of kind of the issues related to the Council on Aging, but this is a, a contract that's an as-needed contract, more on the, the other end of the spectrum for mothers that have new, newborns that don't have the ability to have healthcare, the, and inoculations. So this is something that we have been entering into. One of the things, as I was looking at this, I just wanted to kind of report, the Board of Health asked to, to have this be acknowledged by the, by the Selectmen, so that's actually what I'm trying to do tonight. The next item is the, the status of the Town Administrator's search. I did submit a, an email to the board in which during that, what I would call a period of uncertainty, I had made a commitment to three towns that I would start the process and finish the process with them. So I have done that, I, I have, I'm not going any to, any of those towns, and it would be my intent to, to sign the, the two-year extension. And I did have that period of time where, once the board voted to, to do the offer for two-year extension, I have not applied any other, to any other municipal jobs. So I did feel the, the need to make sure that, I, I kept to my word with some of these search consultants, it's a small universe, and I think it's important that I make sure I maintain a, a positive status with them. So I just wanted to report that to the, to the board and to the community. The next
Michael, that's a question.
On that part of the email you sent us, you referred to the contract and you were working with the attorneys.
Yes.
When can we expect a, a draft of that?
I've been working with the attorneys, quite frankly, and I have, I got a draft today. Well, I had a draft last week, I had to rework, and so I dropped today. My expectation is we'll put it in the packet for next week, so we have it. It's actually, it's actually fairly simple. I mean, the board voted, the board, I just, to be clear, at our, I think our last meeting, at least the meeting before town meeting, after we did the performance review, the recommendation was no, no salary adjustment until a later date possibly, and simple two-year extension, so you'll have that next week.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. The next item I have is we did receive some material from National Grid, they're doing some gas work between 10 and 31 Mandeville Road in West Harwich. They anticipate doing that work from May 10th, so starting tomorrow, through June 15th. So I just wanted to let the folks know in that area that there'd be some. I believe they sent notices also to the residents of that area, but just if you're driving in that area, just to be aware.
You know, it's interesting, just on that point, that whenever someone sees National Grid ripping up anything, they assume it's associated with this transmission line issue. And, you know, West Harwich on 28th, they're doing a lot of work there, and it has nothing to do with, with that problem, quite frankly. It's just normal stuff that they do, so.
I did also, this morning, have a, a meeting, I, I have a fairly regular meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, so Jeremy came by, and just, I, I thought it would make some sense to at least announce this evening that they're doing a fooding around where Toast on Wheels, this coming Saturday, May 14th, they're doing a tasting from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, a trolley-guided tasting tour through Harwich of over 20 restaurants, and a VIP reception from 7:00 to 10:00 PM over at the Waquasit Resort and Golf Club. Information and, and tickets are available through the, the website, Harwich CC, Chamber of Commerce, obviously. And then people can call as well, 508-430-1165. So just to put that, put that plug in for him. I did also
Any questions on that one? Carolyn, are they starting at the community center with that whole thing? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah.
We'll go together. Go ahead.
Cindy is here. We didn't know you wanted to make a presentation.
I didn't know it either. I'm not stealing your limelight, I'm going to let her take it.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear as to where it starts.
Yes, it does start at the community center, so everyone will park their cars at the community center, go into the community center, get your access pass and register, and then there are a variety of restaurants in the community center as well, then you hop on the trolley and go on your tour of Harwich. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, Chris.
Yeah, the next item I have is we had a, a meeting today with King Information Systems. They're the company that we've asked to look at our record storage issue, and actually it was a, I thought, a very productive meeting. They did come up with a estimate. I just wanted to publicly thank Carolyn for the effort of kind of digging into this. The concept that we kind of laid out this morning is, and we do have in the capital budget for FY '18, to do some renovation work down at the community center, that we would move some of the records into the basement of the community center that I think is available for that. The one thing I thought was really positive is that there's a large amount of the boxes that we have down in the basement that we could, actually, there's two, two tracks we can take. One is, some of it is per the, the schedule of the state, could be disposed of through, through a destruction of documents, a legal destruction of documents, I want to just be clear with that. Under state law, you're entitled to keep certain documents for seven years. At the end of seven years, you ask for permission to destroy those documents. Other documents that we have to maintain for an indefinite status, indefinite period of time, we could have microfilmed or microfished. And, you know, one of the things people say pretty commonly is, well, why can't you just do it digitally? I, I guess I'm, I'm old enough to remember when they had the five and a quarter disc, now the three and a half to the, to the thumb drives, and basically, the Secretary of, the Public Records Person, the Director, has decided that the only one that stands the test of time, if you would, for 100-plus years is, is the actual document itself or microfilm or microfiche. So we, we will do a, a project where we are able to, to do those long-term documents, and obviously, microfilm and microfiche is a pretty small piece of material that holds a lot of documents.
Chris, is that the kind of thing we get, we hire for summer students or something, and that's all they do? Or is that something that, you know, some department's got to take on to do?
I think that most likely, some of the documents we're talking about, because of the age of them, and I think it makes some sense to have this firm potentially come in and do that. I know in, in some of places I've been, actually, they had one of the towns that I went through this project with them. You have to have somebody that's kind of used to cataloging. You don't want necessarily a college kid to come up and say, well, where does this accounts payable go? If you have a, a person that's more familiar with the documents. What they do too is they create a, a searchable index, so you're able to find the documents, and they have boxes laid out. So there may be, as we go forward, some opportunity to have kids be able to come in, some are interns, and scan, scan things. But I think on this, what we're looking at is probably having a firm come in and help us to set up that system and then do this work. Actually, I was surprised that the, the number that was provided to us today wasn't really totally outrageous. I mean, it was actually something I think would be fairly manageable. So the one question I have is, do we want to try to do it basically all at once, or do we want to kind of get on to a, a schedule where we do this? The one thing that was, I'll put in an early plug-in, that we probably will put an application into CPC. Obviously, this is a, a preservation of historic records, and I know that they have helped the town clerk already do some scanning and some, not scanning, but some preservation. So we probably will put together a, an application for CPC to, to see if we can get some assistance in this endeavor.
Do they do this work onsite, or they take the boxes away or whatever?
They do them onsite.
Onsite, okay. Linda first, then we'll get to Angela.
Is there any thought to having some of this machinery, this, because I have experience with this, microfilm, microfiche, to have any of that machinery in-house at the end of this project, so that on an ongoing basis, we can just train people here and start with that film fiche? Because the ability to research on one of those is, is enormous. And really, the, you know, the fiche are these little teeny things and they're great.
Yeah, actually, we did talk a, a little bit today about buying a unit to be able to do the reading on art, so that way the town clerk would have one, so someone could come in. I remember being in college, doing some of that, doing some of that stuff. So we, we would have the technology to be able to do that, and they have a, the ability So we would have the technology to be able to do that, and they have the ability to have the material that's attached to your computer, so you don't need to buy the old-fashioned readers, where you push the button and the image comes out. So in terms of doing it ourselves, that's something I'll have to think about, we didn't have that discussion this morning. I think we do a pretty good job now, like in the Selectmen's records already, that by having some of the material in the format, electronic format that we have, I think this is more looking at older files than it is necessarily going forward, because technology, I think, has progressed quite a bit. But that's something that we will definitely keep in mind, is there a mechanism to be able to do that going forward, take the actual image?
Because you can also take things that are on a, that come off the computer, you know, like the general ledger of the activity for the month, and just, if you have a tape of it, taped, I know it's an old word, but you can then just turn it into microfilm or microfiche.
Right.
And those things are really handy too, again, for research, so keep all that in mind as we, you know, the project can be in phases, but that's...
Yes, no, it's a, it's a great idea.
Okay, Angelo, who, like me, grew up on the slide rule, so...
I understand how to do that.
I think you could use a slide rule.
Slide rule, we never had that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I guess, sorry, whatever.
Does the new approach you're planning on following have any impact on the permitting that we wanted to do electronically, that had some issues because of trying to do the storage of files and whatnot?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. One of the things about this organization is downstairs, it's probably safe to say that it's mostly financial files that are in the basement, and I can't remember, I think she said over 1,000 boxes downstairs, I mean, it's just a large amount of material. The idea behind this is that we would, we would do downstairs first, and then start to move out to the different agencies. So to your, to your question, Angelo, I think two things to answer that. One is, unless the building department has specific files downstairs, that would not be included in this, in this work at this time, but I think we would continue to expand once we get the database started to be built, we will put that into the process. Second, that we do have some money that we would use for an intern, so as we're building the Acela files, that would be actually scanned by people coming in and physically taking the, they call them as-bills in the building department, an as-built or a tie-in, and we would have somebody take that and scan that. That's something that we don't need them to help us with, that's something that we could do.
Yeah, I mean, what you've done is you've solved the problem that was causing us a big loss of time, and I'd like us to see us focus on the initial stage.
Yes.
You know, it doesn't matter if they don't get to the old, the old files until next year, the year after.
Right.
So Chris, do you expect a proposal from this outfit fairly soon?
I think what we'll see is two things. One, we'll have an application that will go into CPC, which would be October, I think, is their deadline, and then also we'll put it into the capital budget, so we'll kind of cover. So we would have it for next year. One thing we may try to do this year is, it's not really capital equipment, so what we may try to do this year is if we could put together a little bit of money, have them build the index, and kind of get them started, so when they come in, they can make more progress. But they were, they were, you know, they were in the neighborhood of around $40,000. So the idea would be to try to do what we could do from a paperwork standpoint, and then some of the infrastructure, the actual machinery and such. That would be something that would be capital-related.
Any else?
I do have a couple others. I know today, quite a bit of East Harwich, I think, had some electric issues, I know town hall was blinking on and off all day, we do have an emergency generator, so we were going to definitely stay open, because we don't have a need to close. But I did get a confirmation just before coming in this evening from the deputy police chief, that they do hope to have all the electric issues resolved by, you know, he said 6:30, so the beginning of this meeting, so hopefully when people go home, there won't be any issues. Also, I just wanted to report, last Thursday, there was a muddy creek, the, I don't know if you want to call it a ribbon-cutting, but we did have a presentation onsite. Boy, it was a, it was a cold day to be doing a, that site is a really cold site, just because of the wind, but we did have several of the people, state reps, had said they would show up, we didn't have too many in terms of elected officials, but we did have quite a few of the folks from Fish and Game, and some of the other federal folks that gave us the grant money. The one thing that was interesting to me was that it was in total $6.5 million, 72% of that was grant-funded. So I think that that just speaks to the efforts that staff makes to try to obtain the grants as much as we can, and hopefully, if the results are what we anticipate, that that will avoid having to sewer about 200 homes in East Harwich. So not only was it, in my mind, a good project to be efficient in terms of doing the work, but it may also yield some significant benefit by avoiding having to do 200 homes.
And Chris, we're still scheduled to open that by Memorial Day?
Yes. Now, last week with, I don't know if I've ever seen seven days straight of rain, that has delayed it a little bit, but we do anticipate that it will be done. So they did factor that in.
Is there going to be some way, other than taking the signs on, or whatever, and saying we're open, that we're going to announce that to the public when it does open?
Sure, sure. I think right now that it will be open before Memorial Day, so that, I think, is still very much a given. And then just the last one, I've received an invite, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you received an invite too, from the Pleasant Bay Alliance, they've scheduled an information meeting for Wednesday night at 5:30. I'm a little bit concerned that the, what I've been told about the meeting is that, obviously, as part of the wastewater project in town, there's several different waterways or water aquifer areas, and that apparently there is an interest by the Pleasant Bay Alliance in taking over the Pleasant Bay portion, and have them do it on their own. And I'd like to kind of find that and confirm that out at the meeting, but the board's already weighed in on this, that it has submitted the CWMP, the CWMP calls for the Board of Selectmen to act as the governing authority, if you would, over the wastewater, and I think that this is a preliminary meeting to see, it's my understanding that they did submit something to the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape Cod Commission said, no, we've already done, as part of the 208 plan, the federal plan, that the Board of Selectmen is going to be the authority that's obligated to ensure that that work gets done. And so this is something that, you know, I'm planning on going to see what their pitch is. I do think that there's certainly a great opportunity if they would do monitoring, I don't think monitoring has really been resolved yet, how the monitoring's going to occur. Perfect example, muddy creek, you know, okay, we spent the 6.5, it's intended to have a good outcome of not having to sewer 200 homes, but we need the data over the next five or 10 years to be able to prove that. So I think there's certainly opportunity to do some partnership with Pleasant Bay Alliance.
Michael did mention to me this evening, he asked him if he was going to attend, he will attend.
Okay.
So he'll be there.
That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Can I make a comment on that?
Angelo, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I would suggest you speak to Mr. Wookiee at the county.
The Cape Cod Commission, yeah.
Because the, the Pleasant Bay has been dealing with them and trying to make suggestions to them, and wanting them to make changes in how things are going forward, and it looks like the county so far has been in the same boat where we are. So I think it's an important thing to do. I don't think we need another group to be able to tax us, which is, you know, an interesting problem. So I think it's important to understand from the county where they're going.
Paul was on the invite list, and he is planning on attending this meeting as well.
Good, good.
So report back to us, tell us what you learned, yeah, see how it goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Okay, Selectmen's Report, Janelle, everything?
Nothing.
Michael?
Nothing this evening.
Angelo?
No.
Linda? Okay, so what you have in front of you, I just took a shot at a proposed summer meeting schedule, it is actually built around not meeting on July 4th, so that's how it all works. And I backed it up to as early as not having, what you have in front of you, the yellow is when we would meet, so the first meeting we wouldn't have would be the 20th of June, which is the day before summer starts, summer starts 21st, I believe. So you can noodle that, and we can vote something next week, or whatever, if you're comfortable with it, we can, we can approve it this evening. But it is important that we set this, so that the folks on our team that are setting up public hearings and that type of thing, know when we're going to meet or not meet, and that type of thing, so. All right, Janelle?
Are we going to, I would make a motion that we accept it right now.
Okay. Okay, moved and, moved and seconded, approved the proposed summer Board of Selectmen's schedule, with one exception, and that is, it's marked on here that we would meet the 5th of September, which is Labor Day.
Yeah.
And actually, we'd meet the 6th, so, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Alson Farias say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, it's a schedule, so now you can make your plans for the summer.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, we are adjourned. We are adjourned, until next week.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.